Gave the donation to the Concord Land Conservation Trust, and the trust has in turn submitted the checks to the town. But we're very appreciative and sending them a letter of our appreciation. We also have a proclamation from the Concord Band, their 60th anniversary. Whereas the Concord Band was organized in 1959 to participate in the Concord Patriot's Day Celebration, and whereas in 1972, the Concord Band, joined with the Concord Players and the Concord Orchestra, performed "The Friends of the Performing Arts of Concord," now known as 51 Walden. And whereas the Concord Band provides an opportunity for adult musicians from over 40 Massachusetts cities and towns to expand their instrumental and ensemble skills, and whereas the Concord Band plays 15 or more Concordes yearly in Concord and at various locations, including summer performances at Fruitland Museum in Harvard, and whereas the Concord Band concerts are available through the YouTube channel and Minuteman Media Network, and whereas the Concord Band has commissioned or received as gifts 83 new works for Symphonic Wind Ensemble, making new compositions available to concert bands throughout county, country, and beyond, and whereas the Concord Band engages in world-class guest conductors and soloists for the benefit of its members and audiences, and whereas in 2013, the Concord Band was the first community band in New England to receive the Suddler Silver Scroll, North America's most prestigious award for recognizing community bands of outstanding musical excellence. And now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Concord, Massachusetts, celebrate the 60th anniversary of the Concord Band and do hereby recognize the Concord Band's many contributions to the town over the past 60 years. I don't know if, June Grace, you are here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for notifying us of this, and I believe we have the proclamation signed.
Yep.
So we will get that to you. Thank you so much. And we have one day special licenses for Lauren Pinkus on March 30th, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., 40 Westford Road, Wine &amp; Malt, Military Friends Foundation, April 14th, 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., 269 Monument Street, all alcohol. I would accept the motion at this point.
Okay. I move to accept the consent agenda as read. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, I think we are ready for the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a few items to mention. The Concord Independent Battery was granted permission to fire the town's cannons on the afternoon of February 24th during the memorial service for Van Caddick-Larner. He served as on the Select Board in the late 80s and early 1990s, and that's consistent with the town's policy on firing the cannon. The Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, 100% design drawings are now on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee's website, and folks can check them out. There isn't a public hearing scheduled, so I think comments will be taken by the Mass DOT, but if, you know, once the comment period is completed, they expect to put the project out to bid next summer. So we'll move towards construction in two years, we expect that. And the Phase 2B is the bridge over Route 2 that will connect Phase 2A, which is Acton, with 2C, which is Concord. Then 23 Church Street, which is on the campus of the Harvey Wheeler Community Center, is the former church building that was purchased by the Concord Children's Center. They pulled a permit to make some improvements and will be converting it to a theater use, and they'll be having performances there once the work is done. And then lastly, next Monday night, town hearings, town meeting hearings will resume with the Select Board's hearing on warrant articles concerning non-financial matters next Monday night in the hearing room here in the townhouse. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Since our last full meeting on February 4th, a letter was sent to Senator Mike Barrett on behalf of the Select Board thanking him for his leadership in addressing climate change in Massachusetts with his legislation that sets a price on carbon. It's SD 1817, An Act to Combat Climate Change. Tonight, we'll be hearing from students from Concord Academy regarding the Green New Deal resolution, which I believe Concord Can is also requesting the board to sign on. As you know, we are in the midst of planning for town meeting, which is scheduled for April 8th. In the coming weeks, there'll be a number of public hearings at 7 o'clock in the hearing room of the townhouse. As was just mentioned, on the 25th, the Finance Committee will discuss the school budget and articles and the Community Preservation Committee articles, and we'll have a public hearing on March 11th to review the enterprise fund budget and articles. On Tuesday, the 26th, the Select Board will hold a public hearing. The board will be discussing tonight the approval of the 2019 election warrant and taking position on warrant articles. And on March 5th, the Planning Board will hold public hearings on these articles. March 6th is the deadline for voter registration for the annual town election and town meeting. And the annual town election will be held on March 26th. The Select Board has received materials regarding warrant Article 14, the middle school feasibility study, Article 25, the real estate transfer tax, and Article 29, the extension of the Formula Business Bylaw. It's very important to receive and to have the input early. It allows us to have important questions asked and hopefully assist the citizens in the ability to make reasoned decisions. The Superintendent and the Chair of the Concord Public School will be presenting tonight. The real estate transfer tax is discussed at the February 11 Finance Committee public hearing, and I anticipate that the Formula Business Bylaw will be discussed at the Planning Board's March 5th public hearing. Also, I would just note that there is a notice to dog and cat owners. The annual rabies vaccination clinic is to be held on March 2nd at the Kaiser Road Public Works Building. Dogs only, 1:00 p.m. to 1:45 p.m. All dogs must be on leash accompanied by adult. Please bring your dog's license and previous rabies certificate. Cats only, 1:45 to 2:30 p.m. All cats must be in a cat carrier. And then let's mention, please note that the veterinarian on site reserves the right not to administer vaccines to fractious cats, biting or kissing. These cats have to be treated in an office visit that is more controlled environment. And while we're on the subject of dogs and cats, we did have a hearing at the Concord District Court on the nuisance dog issue. The judge took it under advisement, but that at least is coming to somewhat of a resolution in the end. So I think we are now ready for the Concord Academy students. Here. Now Andrew is a master of this. And if you, we are being recorded, and I failed to mention that, I wasn't even prompted on it, which I usually would be when I make that mistake, by the Minuteman Media Network. And we request that you speak into the mic and state your name and where you were from.
Great. Hi, my name is Seg Leba. I am a junior at Concord Academy. And good evening, thank you so much for hearing from us tonight. We are high school students in Concord concerned about how climate change will impact our future, and we are working with the Sunrise Movement to make change happen. Sunrise is a national movement of young people uniting to stop climate change and create millions of good jobs in the process. Around the country, high schoolers right now are visiting their local governments to ask for support for the Green New Deal. It is our hope that widespread local support will push federal action on a Green New Deal. In the wake of a year of abnormal weather activity and devastatingly poor growing seasons for farmers in this country, we are pushing for politicians to recognize the difficulties American people are facing. In Massachusetts, we face the coastal erosion of Cape Cod, shifting ranges of native tree species, forced migration of native birds, and rising infestation of ticks and other disease-bearing insects in areas Concordians enjoy for recreation. That's why we need your help. Our hope is that city councils, town boards, and county commissions will pass resolutions to demonstrate a symbolic commitment. We call on you to stand up for a just and livable future and show the federal government that communities coast to coast demand a Green New Deal.
And you would like us to send this petition to Senator?
We have a couple more.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Hi, my name is, is this good?
I think that sounds okay.
Okay. My name is Angie Minicello. I'm 16 years old, and I'm a sophomore at Concord Academy. I'm worried about the effects of climate change impacting my family and my friends. So I went up to camp in New Hampshire this summer. Camp is beautiful. It has trees, flowers, wildlife, and it's on a lake. Campers get to play sports, do high ropes courses, swim, boat, and more. The bonds I've made there are so strong because everyone does activities with their cabins every day. And every day, without a doubt, I could wear a t-shirt and shorts because even if it was raining, it was hot. I was at camp during some of the many heat waves over the summer. Councilors and campers alike encouraged our friends to drink water and put on sunscreen. It was so hot that my entire cabin would have to sit still for 10 minutes not to be drenched in sweat. We'd bring spray water bottles with us to keep ourselves somewhat cool for a few seconds. I distinctly remember the amount of trips to the nurse that my friends would take daily. I saw my friends pass out from the heat. I remember the nurse's golf cart coming to and from the infirmary every other day, picking up a camper that was extremely dizzy or nauseous from the heat. Seeing my friends and counselors sick, dizzy, and nauseous and unconscious made me so concerned and frightened. I was worried for their safety. The counselors and heads staff at camp worked so hard to help the campers as well. They put an extra effort to keep the campers hydrated and make sure they had enough electrolytes. And still, they were girls going to the infirmary because they felt dizzy and sick from the intense heat waves that are becoming more frequent from climate change. Would you want to see your friends getting sick and passing out from the heat in the best place on earth? A week or so after coming back from camp, I heard about my family in California. My aunt and cousin had to leave their house and fly across the country to escape the raging wildfire that resulted from insane heat waves. On the East Coast and the West Coast, heat waves were causing damage to people and property. And according to NASA, 2018 was the fourth hottest year recorded. The top three years, 2017, 2015, and 2016. People are overheating. People are leaving their own homes because of the increasing heat waves. Climate change is hurting people and preventing people from living their normal lives. I want to make sure my friends are healthy at camp. I want my aunt to be safe in her own home. If we don't try to prevent further climate change now, worse could happen to my family, my friends, myself, and the world we all live in. When I heard about the Green New Deal, I supported it because I want to prevent the worst effects of climate change from impacting us. I want to make a change so no one else has to worry about the safety of their friends, their family, or their planet.
Hi, my name is Audrey Lynn, and I'm a senior at Concord Academy. We urge you to take action on climate change by signing this symbolic resolution calling on the federal government to pass a Green New Deal. The Green New Deal would do three key things. First, eliminate greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. Second, invest in communities on the front lines of poverty and pollution. And thirdly, guarantee a good job to anyone who wants to help make this happen. This deal would provide millions of jobs across the nation, as well as reboot the economy and provide the U.S. with renewable energy. It would make climate action a priority in Washington with the legislation necessary to create a healthy future that is rooted in justice. On February 6th, Senator Ed Markey of Massachusetts and Representative Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez of New York released twin resolutions for the Green New Deal in the Senate and the House. Already, 84 congressional representatives, including Concord's representative Lori Tran, and 12 senators, have co-signed the resolutions. The resolutions are the first that tackle climate change in line with what science and justice demand. There is no more time to be idle on climate action if our generation is to have a safe and livable future.
Hi, my name is Anna Sander, and I'm a junior at Concord Academy. We commend Concord for the sustainability efforts it has undertaken thus far, including appointing a town sustainability coordinator, creating several town committees focused on sustainability, energy, and climate, implementing the first-ever national ban of plastic water bottles, setting carbon emission goals, and helping Concord residents in learning how they can reduce the carbon footprint of their own homes. Concord has always been at the forefront of social progress as the birthplace of American freedom and the home of some of the greatest American literature. Concord again was a pioneer in reducing plastic waste by taking the national lead in banning plastic water bottles. We urge Concord to lead again in the fight against climate change by signing this resolution. Over 290 members of the Concord Academy community have signed a petition asking for your support, including Concord Academy as a private institution. In addition, over 35 others who work, go to school, or live in Concord encourage your endorsement. The Concord community is on your side. Help us protect the places and the people that we love from catastrophic climate change by signing this resolution for a Green New Deal. Help us demonstrate to the federal government that this issue must be acted upon now. Thank you for your time, and we hope you will support the Green New Deal.
Thank you all.
We would now like to welcome some questions, and I also do have some literature to pass around.
I guess my first question was, once we sign it, then what do you want us to do with it?
Yeah, so once you sign it, we hope that you will publicly post on your website, yeah, the Concord website, that you, as a town, do endorse this. It would also be really cool if you could send a thank you to Lori Tran and just tell her that you are on her side and you support her supporting this Green New Deal.
And Senator Markey, I'm sure.
Yes, that would be also fantastic. And also Elizabeth Warren has signed on.
Anybody have any questions? I would only say that personally, I'm happy to do this. I think the board would do it. It's going to be a long battle, so don't get discouraged. You have to keep fighting for things that you believe in. So this is a good start, but you know, you'll get some pushback, as I'm sure. We probably won't send this to the White House. But thank you all very much.
So one of the things we've learned is that in the absence of federal leadership, communities can take action, and that's part of what you are hearing, or you are reciting about what Concord's done so far. We have very aggressive goals for managing our greenhouse gas emissions in town. We have a sustainability director. This is in line with everything that we've been working towards for the last six years, at least, if not longer. Right. Land preservation efforts.
I just would say that our new state representative is here, who is a big supporter as well. I saw her this morning at a Concord Can event, so that there is a lot of activity in Concord along this line. But as they say, you know, it's important to just keep the battle because, you know, if a few steps make a big difference, but we've got to continually light the battle. So thank you all for coming.
I would also add that it's fabulous to see Concord Academy taking the lead on this, and the Sunrise Movement is a wonderful addition to a lot of the activity that's gone on in climate change over the last number of years. And I would strongly advise or suggest that you reach out to the clubs at Concord Parallel.
We've been in contact with them.
As well as Middlesex.
Also been in contact with them.
Of students in this town, and it'd be great to see a unified presence. I'm looking at the superintendent of our.
Yeah, I met with our new team on a.
Exactly.
Monday morning of last week, so I'm sure they'd be interested.
I do.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
You're now ready to discuss the middle school building project. We think that just to present.
I want to say that while I'm perfectly willing to support this, it's a great idea. I think that's a piece of legislation that's not quite right for prime time yet, so.
It's not legislation, it's a proclamation.
But I focus, we can do a lot locally, but this is a global issue, and we do everything we can to create our leadership moving ahead on this.
Ready for the motion?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye. I would further authorize the chair. Telling them, forming them of our signature on the Green New Deal. And I would add a thank you to them for their leadership on this. A second?
All in favor? Aye. Luckily, we've got a very good assistant that was now. So now we're ready to discuss the middle school building project.
Perhaps another point in the Green New Deal for Concord.
Okay, identify yourselves.
Yes, Joanne Boynton, Chair of the Concord School Committee, under the Chestnut Street in Concord.
Lori Hunter, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you very much for letting us take the time to walk you through this. It's a lot, and I appreciate your patience and understanding, but it's super complicated. And we would like to hopefully, in our presentation, be able to answer most questions, and along the way, feel free to ask. A little overview. We face a time-sensitive planning challenge related to both middle schools. The buildings and the infrastructure and the equipment are well beyond their useful life and certainly not very reliable. We've applied to MSBA for funding in 2017 and 2018, and both times we've been declined. There's lots of competition for these funds. And so we face a difficult choice, whether we reapply and risk being declined again or we move ahead on our own. The question comes down to cost and control. Self-funding will be a more expensive endeavor, though increased costs could be offset by avoiding escalations that are likely if we are not approved by MSBA in 2019. Waiting for MSBA approval is risky because the systems that we have, there are possible failures, and the cost escalation to construction is likely. Self-funding would allow us to build a school that better meets our educational needs and programs, and we've attempted to describe all of these issues in the slides that follow. A few caveats before we start, we have not designed a school building. We have early input from architects Finegold Alexander, and their recommendation was one building, roughly 125,000 square feet, to be located in the Sandborne site. The second caveat is all these cost estimates are based on the best available data that we have today. A couple, the view that we use are the cost per square foot on current MSBA middle school projects, the cost escalation projections by MSBA, and I will say for anybody, this is on their website. You can get all this information. And then the cost of maintenance or replacing some of our big concerns at the middle school, the roof, plumbing, septic, by our school department. So at this point, there are many more unknowns than knowns, and we've tried to set out sort of a digestible set of information. We'll just cover quickly tonight the building histories, the current conditions, the process and timeline, the project costs, the cost of waiting, and the benefits of self-funding. The buildings are 49 years old and 55 years old. You'll see there, Sandborne and Peabody. This just covers, in essence, that we have done some updates a while back to keep the buildings to code, and most recently, we replaced the boilers and the water heaters. I'll talk a little bit further in about sort of the timeline and the discussions that we've been having for years around these buildings and how to maintain them and keep them to be really great educational spaces for our kids. We have added, over the course of many years, over 10 years, three modular buildings at Sandborne. They have two classrooms each, and Peabody was initially constructed as an elementary school, and two years after opening Sandborne, we opened Peabody to actually accommodate the overflow of middle schoolers. So it is, it's not a middle school building, and it doesn't have, or didn't have, we've done a little bit, you know, renovating, but walls to the ceilings, doors that close, certain things you would want in middle school that are different for an elementary school. Most recently, in 2016, we, the school committee formed a facilities planning committee. This was on the heels of finishing the high school and starting to address sort of a comprehensive look at what was really going on with these buildings. The committee is of 15 community members. They met monthly, they had public, held public forums, and they hired Finegold Alexander Architects and asked the following three questions for them to do work on. What would it take to remain in the current buildings for 10 years? What are options and estimated costs for a renovation project? And what are options and estimated costs for a new building? A year later, 2017, Finegold Alexander has their summary findings, again, or has their report. They're on our website, all this, much more detailed, but I'm just going to give you the summary of their findings after their work. About the current conditions, Peabody and Sandborne conditions are deteriorated and obsolete. Although they're very well maintained, they are at the end of their lifespan. The two-campus configuration is inefficient and expensive, and the overflow status is not sustainable. And the current condition creates a struggle for our school community. The results are suboptimal educational experience. The 10-year outlook, and again, you can get a lot of detail on the report, but the estimate cost to retain, to remain, sorry, in the current buildings for 10 years and attain appropriate educational environment is between $34 million and $47 million. I'll, we'll stay closer to $34 million for tonight. That is really infrastructure and systems and not much of the renovating of spaces and things that are, would be great to do that starts to push you up into $47 million. Current conditions. Current conditions include operational inefficiencies, which I just alluded to, outdated infrastructure, aging equipment, overcrowded buildings, and most of all, educational shortcomings. Our operational inefficiencies, it's a challenge to maintain educational and service equity between these two buildings. It requires redundant positions. It's expensive utility costs due to outdated systems as much as running two buildings versus one. And the school, the people in the school department have gone through the buildings and the costs, and the excess operational expenses is $548,000 per year to maintain the two buildings. Outdated infrastructure, original to these buildings are the heating lines, plumbing lines, electrical systems. In some cases, the plumbing lines are in concrete. You can't even access them to see and take care of them. The roofs are at the end of their projected lifespan. The septics are over 50 years old. Is that making a point? Is that me making a blank? Yeah, sorry. There is hazardous materials such as asbestos, mercury, and PCBs in both buildings. They're heavily monitored and well taken care of, but should there be any kind of, you know, repair needed to, some of the duct work is in asbestos, that's obviously much more expensive and dangerous and has to be tended to carefully. Neither building has a fire suppression system, and we've noted some concrete that's starting to flake off the Peabody building, which is sort of the final stages of concrete failure.
Joanna, can I just comment a little, you know, we, we're just constantly holding our breath. This year, school year alone, we've had a septic backup that led to sewage coming up through the bathroom floors and in the bottom floor of Sandborne and out into the hallways. We had to relocate five classrooms on a dime. Those are the things that keep a superintendent up at night if that were to be more expansive or not on a Friday afternoon at 2:00 with a repair that could be done over the weekend and cleaned and back in business on Monday. Very concerning. Similar situation in one of the storage rooms at Sandborne where the radiator pipage had leaked, and because it's all corroded in there, and once we took it off, we were like, oh, surprising it's not leaking everywhere. And we had water on the floor of that room. We've now had to implement building checks all weekend, which costs us money, just to be sure that nothing occurs over the weekend we don't know about as immediately as possible. So there's just, there seems to be this feeling now from our perspective that there's a lot of things that could go wrong, and we're always just holding our breath trying to make sure we're ready for whatever it's going to be. We're in a pretty reactive mode, I think is an important piece to say, so.
Is this information provided to the Mass School Building Association, all the sort of information about the outdated infrastructure?
Yes, certainly it was. So the feedback I got from them, we're going to talk more on MSBA as we go in, it's been the same message every year. They validate the need, they validate the level and the situation of what the buildings are and the condition that they're in. It simply is a matter of who else is in the pool, and it's a clean start every year. So they're awarding between 12 and 15 projects a year, they're getting upwards of 70 applications a year. We'll show you some of the data.
They put the school as being okay, and they had three categories, and it weren't in the lowest category.
Yeah, we'll show you some of that data there when I ask them that specifically because we were rated a Level 2 in terms of the building conditions. 2 has a big bandwidth to it. There's many, many just schools that are rated a Level 2. They have funded Level 1 schools, and they have funded Level 4 schools and a number of 2s and 3s. So we'll show you the data from 2018. Certainly, that system was meant to give them a big picture view of the schools in the state, but when they get into the deeper application process, it doesn't seem to exactly correlate, so.
That'd be helpful, unless it's reading them. It looks as if, okay, you know, it's not perfect, but you can patch, and it's a lot better than an awful lot of other schools.
Right.
Yeah, when we get a little further, and I'll show, we can show you the schools that were invited this year and their ratings as well. So aging equipment, just most of the mechanical and electric equipment is original to the buildings. Mechanical equipment now is, you know, somewhat unreliable and subject to failure. There's no backup generation power. And really, one of the biggest issues is the parts are often not available. It's very hard to get parts for these, you know, the original ventilation system and that kind of thing, which also are often in very difficult places to reach. I spared you all the pictures, and we will hopefully come for a tour tonight, which wanted to get to the information for you.
If you could pull the, like, a little closer, that gives us kind of a signal.
Okay.
And I would just echo that for anybody who's watching this tonight, you might plan the tours throughout this. Because I think that one of the things the select board meeting tonight can do is...
Yeah, every Saturday morning in the month of March.
Every Saturday morning, month of March, at what time and where?
9:30 at Sandborne, 11 o'clock at Peabody.
So we have that scheduled too on our website? It's an excellent point. I don't know if we did we copy?
I left them in my office.
All right, we meant to bring you some, but certainly, we, well, we can talk offline, but we were hoping also, if we get the chance, we'd just like to take you on a tour when it's convenient for this group.
I was only glad when Ms. Pout was the chair of the committee.
Oh, okay.
She organized the tour of Sandborne.
Great.
I recommend if you haven't.
It's helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then the issues of overcrowding, we have three modular units at Sandborne. This is an issue of students continuously entering into a building. We've had to give swipe cards to kids who have their classrooms out there because of safety issues, and it creates delay in, you know, class time, and there are not bath, there are no bathrooms out there, so they often have to leave to go back to the main building. We have a custodial closet that was converted to a learning space in Sandborne. If you've ever been to Peabody, the cafeteria is, in essence, you know, tables that are set out by the lockers. It's very congested, especially when classes are eating and another class comes in to, you know, get stuff in their lockers. Peabody stairwell is one stairwell meant for little kids. It's very congested between classes, it's just one for passage. And the educational shortcomings, you know, we lack space for the way kids are educated today. I think that Lori can speak even more closely to this, she's been to some of the, but briefly. 21st century learning is a lot of project-based learning, it's a lot of team-based learning, hands-on learning, interdisciplinary, no, excuse me, interdisciplinary learning with, you know, classes, different disciplines being able to come together and do work, have breakout spaces, grade team implementation. All these things are ways in which the staff really tries to keep current with our buildings, but are very challenged.
Yeah, sure. If you'll go to the next slide, did we take all the pictures out?
No, I took the pictures.
Oh, you took my pictures? Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, no problem. Really, what our vision here is not to just look at what we're trying to do now, but we're hoping to do over the next 20 to 50 years. You know, 2019 and education is not what it was 20 and 30 years ago. We need to prepare, be preparing kids for an environment that's very, very different. We know that employers are looking for us to create opportunities for collaboration and creativity, many modes of communication, including presentation skills. All of that has to happen through project-based learning, authentic, real-world opportunities for kids in an environment that some of the structures we're all very used to is very highly modified. And that would include the space that kids are in. So we've been out, I opened a new school in my previous district, we were out last week to Situitt's new middle school. So what that starts to look like is, especially in the middle school model, we in theory have houses at the middle school where kids are grouped on one half of the 8th grade or one half of the 7th grade, and they all share a teacher. But in the, in the way we're configured right now, they're spread out all over the building. In the, in a newer school, you would cluster those teachers together, so science, math, social studies, English, that entire team set of teachers would be in the same vicinity with a lot of open, common space available for overflow of kids doing work, as well as small, small project and breakout rooms for kids to fine-tune their projects, rehearse their presentations, things like that. So we're, we're trying to do a middle school model in what's very much a junior high environment, although in Peabody, I don't even know if you call it that. It's a junior high-ish feel in an old elementary school. So the space definitely starts to really limit what our opportunities are for what we can do in the future with trying to really come at education in a different approach. Interdisciplinary also has to be the way that we start to integrate things. Right now, we're just not set up for that. Everything's very self-contained, and the kids are traveling. Sometimes the extent, you can have a 6th grader who will be up on the second floor of Sandborne, need to get all the way out to the mods, which can take them as much as five minutes. So to even consider it interdisciplinary, when the configuration of the building feels in, is physically that way, is very, very challenging. Question?
How does, this is, you know, exotic and exciting. I'm imagining how this might translate to the new high school.
Sure.
Or the way high school is being conducted.
Yes.
I'm assuming, and I'm also imagining that there's a range from 6th grade.
Of course.
It seems like perhaps not quite as ready for some of these concepts, 8th grade perhaps.
Well, it's really interesting, because you go to the elementary model, and our kids are self-contained all day long, and all the subjects are in one room. So those elementary teachers have a lot of fluidity in how they present information and how they work with kids to develop experiences. So it's just making sure that it's developmentally appropriate. The high school is set up to allow us to do a lot of those same opportunities, and again, we have a range there because there's also a lot of professional development work to be done with teachers. You know, we have everything from Rivers and Revolutions, which is at its extreme mode of this, which the space is incredibly important, to some of our smaller settings where we've got two classrooms coming together, you know, an English and a social studies doing some integrated work. So the goal here is to build flexibility. And right now, the two buildings that are serving our middle schools just do not offer any flexibility. In fact, it's probably just the opposite. We're completely limited by what we have for those ideas and opportunities that we can offer. When we were at the school in Situitt, one of the middle school teachers says to me, because it is open and airy and bright, and yet there are classrooms with doors and things like that, but she said, you know, Peabody kind of has this feel, only for all the wrong reasons, you know? It is open, and there's bright, and there's no doors and things like that, but it doesn't allow us to contain where we need to and segregate when we want to. So it's a lot about the flexibility and making sure that the basics are there while we allow for the collaboration and cooperation. So the grand vision is a work in progress, I would absolutely say that, is a big part of our strategic plan. Situitt took on a project-based learning initiative two years prior to opening that school, and you could see signs everywhere of teaching and learning having changed so that they were maximizing the space that they had available.
The proposed new school is 125,000 square feet. What would be the combined acre, square footage of Peabody and Sandborne?
150?
Probably 150.
It's about 100.
A little less, about 140.
Yeah.
Square foot.
140 combined.
They, we actually just did a fundraiser at the middle school for Makerspace, which was really exciting, great community building event, but in doing so, one, we had to take the funds we raised and split it in half, so you, you know, you get half presumably as much. And two, I think some librarians...
The librarians gave up, gave up the office space in the library to allow for any type of space like that where kids are allowed, you know, can be able to be created.
A lot of them are doing a lot with it, but it is challenging. Okay, so the process and timeline. Just a, this is a quick summary of many years of conversation. I don't think that the fact that we're talking about a middle, a new middle school is a new topic. It's always been sort of on the burners, and what do we need to do? These buildings continue to get older and older. We made some decisions back when I was first on the committee to replace the boilers and water heaters at Peabody in the summer of 2014, and then we did the likewise at Sandborne in 2015. These seem to be opportunities to have savings in utility cost if we did. And also, we, having them break would be much more expensive as we looked at a number of things that were big-ticket items that needed to be addressed. At the same time, I just sort of overlay that we were getting ready to open a new high school, and so we had a lot going on, a lot of focus, and the town had been incredibly generous and supportive of that project. So we needed to really be careful and prudent about what we were going to do with these buildings. And again, I've touched on it earlier, we, as a committee, formed the CMS facility planning committee for that reason, to really get serious and hire a third party and go in and tell us what they saw. Finegold Alexander's findings, again, they're very comprehensive, but there's one quote from it, which is operating two campuses is not fiscally prudent and not in the interest of the Concord taxpayer. So ideally, we would get to one school and be able to, you know, save in the context that we've been talking about. So in doing so, we applied for state funding in 2017, and in 2018, both times declined, and in 2018, the most recent time was in December, we learned, early December, and we had to file warrant articles. So that brings us to our advocacy for our articles tonight for this feasibility plan for the middle school. I will say that the feasibility study includes far more than a feasibility study, but includes also taking the project from a committee, a town committee, building committee, to hiring the owner's project manager, to hiring architects, to feasibility and visioning, and ultimately, a schematic design. Well, it's a very comprehensive and long process, very rewarding, and you get to really contemplate how to best do this.
Do you see getting town input and the committee appointed, say, by the board, prior to that process?
Prior to...
The feasibility.
Well, so I guess the timing would be, ideally, if this article was approved, we would have a building committee that is informed as a town committee under the direction of the select board and town manager to be ready to roll, because that's where it starts. That that group, that committee, that town committee is the entity that oversees this process all the way through to a building if we choose to do that. Does that answer the question?
I think so. I think the timing is going to be somewhat tricky in terms of defining what the feasibility study does. And it seems to me that that, you don't want to get a project that is sort of up or down, that this is what is going to be sort of proposed before you have agreement that that is what your, the study should be dealing with. I mean, I think you're going to want to get input from finance, you're going to want to get input from construction, people to make sure that it's being monitored in a way that is cost-effective.
Yeah.
There is a concern that the high school wasn't very expensive, it was a big project. There was some sense that Sandborne, or that the middle school was not going to have to be a large project this quickly.
So it, two pieces, I think, to my answer on that. One is we would completely look to follow the MSBA process, which is very thorough in terms of who would be on the committee, and that could be up for some discussion, but it's a very thoughtful guideline in terms of making sure you have professionals as part of, community members who are professionals as part of the oversight of the project. The second piece of my answer is, having looked at the history more closely in the last few weeks, in 2015, it was suggested the buildings might have a longer life to them. That being said, though, there was a huge list of infrastructure projects in the five-year capital plan at the time, which, when we looked at that just even today, totaled over $12 million. When you start to then flesh that out, and I think that's what the committee did, and more people in the room know this story and lived it than I did, but started to look at what they were going to propose in terms of those projects over that five-year period, I think the question started to become, is this the smartest use of our money in buildings that at the time were 45 approximately years old? And that's what led to the feasibility work and the planning work that happened under the facilities planning group that was formed and was funded through the 2016 town meeting article. So I think the discussion became, are we spending smart money at this point, or are we looking at money that's going to put good infrastructure into an older site? And that's where the things, I think, started to turn differently a little bit.
And also, I mean, I think your point of the two schools just is not the practical way to go.
Right. And we're trying to do our best we can with the two schools. I know many of you are aware of the work we're going to do this fall for all of 6th grade to go to Peabody, and 7th and 8th at Sandborne. That's just an attempt to fix some of our bigger-picture challenges with vertical discussion and horizontal discussion. But don't, don't get me wrong here, we've just added a transition for kids, which is about the most challenging thing you can do. It's always an issue to transition. Right now, it's from 5 to 6 and 8 to 9. We've just now added another spot that we're going to have to have a lot of concerted work and effort to be sure that 6 to 7 transition is smooth. So it's still about doing the best with what we have, rather than the one building which we think can have all of those best-case pieces and eliminate some of the cons.
So to answer your question about the ratings and the schools, this is a slide that includes the schools that were invited this year. It's 12 schools. On the previous slide, I just, in essence, there were 70 SOIs submitted to MSBA this year. 12 of those projects were invited in. It's very competitive, and they do their assessment of the need and the urgency based on a number of criteria and ratings. So these are the 18 schools. I will be honest, we've looked at this and we've looked at past ones, there is not a lot of consistency to figure out how they make those determinations. The building condition, the third-to-last column, capacity and general environment are the three ratings that they will do. You can see that the first school in Brookline got a number one, which is the best rating, and it's over 100 years old, what the original building is. So it's what they consider good condition and how they evaluate that. We are, CMS was rated a 2. You can see there are a number of 2s there, so there's a 3, 1, 3, and 1, 4. We likewise were averaging capacity, and our general environment was 1 like everybody else. But again, it's not, it's not as an exact science.
Not very helpful.
I can also show you here of the 12 schools invited, 85... I can also show you here of the 12 schools invited, 85% were in the category of one or two. One was three and one was four, as I pointed out. Below is a graph of all the schools in the state. So most are a one, only slightly below that is two. So you see that most are considered a one or two. Three is, is, you know, considerably less than obviously four. There are only 20 schools in the state that they have rated a four. And you say that 12 schools a year get?
Twelve to 15. It's all dependent on the revenue that they have and the cost of the projects. It's, MSBA is funded through one cent on the sales tax annually, which is usually 560 to 600 million dollars or so. So it all depends on the schools that are selected. You have a couple of, if you build a large urban high school, Revere is in the mix this year. Lowell was in the year before. They're more subsidized, so more of the money goes to them. So it's always dependent on how far the money will go and who, who's selected.
Okay, project costs. Again, I go back to what I stated in the beginning. We do, we are doing the best with the current data that we have. Average cost this year for the middle school projects that MSBA is doing is $648 a square foot. If we take Fine Gold Alexander's study that suggests 125,000 square foot building, then we have a total estimated cost in 2019 of approximately $81 million. Again, a lot of us, like I said, you can get down their site, the MSBA site. So the, the cost to build a new middle school will increase substantially each year. The cost growth that they have seen on the MSBA-funded projects in the last six years, or well, 2010 to 2016, averaged 6.93% per year. So in that average, if you, if you use that number for our current calculation, similar projects are in the $90 million range. So given our best timeline, a likely cost would be in the $90 million plus range for a new middle school.
Joanna, I remember, I think I remembered correctly that the MSBA funds whatever they fund, but there are certain things that never get funded. I can't remember.
Correct.
Gyms.
Yeah.
So if Fine Gold was suggesting 125,000 square feet, is that 125,000 square feet of stuff MSBA would fund? Or was that their total estimate of what they thought we wanted? That's not a dumb question.
That would include an auditorium and a full-size gymnasium, which would not be fully funded by MSBA. They don't support auditoriums in the middle school environment. They look for like a cafeteria where there's a stage in the cafeteria. And the gym space is normally funded at a smaller than, what word do I want, regulation size. So I expect there would be things in the Fine Gold schematic, which is a really, really high-level schematic. We're talking like an aerial outline, nothing more than that, that would not be fully subsidized.
So I touch on that in a little bit, and it's, it's a great question because you're trying to evaluate how much is reimbursed of what you do. There are other exclusions like square foot and some other things. And they, we have found over time that there are more exclusions.
They don't require carbon neutral or the, the best in terms of environmental material necessarily?
Yeah. They don't require, but there's incentives.
There are incentives.
There are some incentives, yeah.
Yeah, there are incentives.
Is it high school?
Yes.
We got some, yes, for those. So again, taking that assumptions, the, the assumptions on the previous slide, we've done an estimated tax impact of a $90 million middle school. This is a typical borrowing we've done for other buildings, so we're using that. I recognize and I've learned, and I have a lot to learn, and a lot of different ways to borrow money. So we are going to make this assumption. It's a four and a quarter percent interest, level principal payment, and a 25-year term. The average median household tax impact, average over the course of the 25 years, would be $764. Per, no, the average, if, yes, per year for, if you did straight average. Now, the estimated peak tax impact could be as high as a thousand. I only point this out is that it's, again, there are very, there are a lot of variables. And we, we even with this high school had some of a, a fund, stabilization fund that helped with some of the peak numbers. We have a building in Peabody that is an asset that could also be used to offset costs. If we, you know, if we surplus that back to the town and there's some opportunity there. It's, sits on, is it seven acres? Roughly eight acres? What?
You're right.
7.69, I think. Anyway, so there, there, there's a lot of ways to skin this cat. We're trying to give a, a basic sense of things that we've done in the past and what we know today. And there you can see what the, the current median household value is. It's over $880,000, and the current median tax bill is just over $12,000 a year. Cost of waiting. So here are some of the things we've already touched on, but these are some of the major infrastructure failure risks as we see them as we build these. The heating lines showing signs of corrosion recently at Sandborne that Dr. Hunter referenced, causing some short-term closure of spaces. And there's the risk of failure increases with age and time. The cost of replacing the heating lines in both buildings, we've got an estimate to be just over a million dollars. The roofs are at the end of their projected life. Small leaks over time, we've patched and we will continue to do that. Larger seam failures are very expensive and particularly disruptive to the school environment. The total cost of replacing the roofs of both buildings have been estimated at four and a half million. The septic system is another big concern for us, 20, I mean, over 50 years old. We had the recent backup. We had the opportunity to repair it. Again, a little unsure as we went in, and it turned out to cost a little more than we thought, but $20,000 just to do that repair, which we believe is a very good repair to hold us together. But it's obviously very concerning. It was the end of a school day. We had to take some classes in locker area offline at Sandborne. It could be very disruptive. The total cost to repair that septic is estimated at 300, roughly 300,000. I still have that right? So those, that, those are the big-ticket items that we see as the biggest concerns is, is just over $6 million. Okay, again, another difficult sort of contemplation, but this is the projected estimate we put together for waiting a year for MSBA funding. So this assumes a few things. One, that we're accepted next year. So this spring would be when you file it, you'd get accepted at the end of 2019, but there's no guarantee, and we are feeling less and less optimistic about. That puts the delay of the project completion by two years. And the escalation cost, if you, we're going to assume is between 3% and 7%. I talked on the, the construction cost escalation is near 7%. There are aspects of the project that are not that high, you know, that will not be a, you know, a, a 7% escalation. So we give, we're just working with a range, and we're assuming a $90 million building. So the cost in that one wait that we get in is the escalation cost on the project. Again, the low end, $5 million, the high end, $15 million. That would be your 3% to 7%. Operational costs, just over $1 million is the, the 548,000 to operate two, out of two buildings. And the capital maintenance costs, we had 200 in there, 200,000. That, we, we, we have also done something very intentional, our capital investment for the projects this spring, or in front of town meeting this spring, to do the things we need to do and then hope that holds us for four to five years, intended, you know, to hold us four to five years. And we have reserved $100,000 just in case the other things that might come up. And those, those, the investment this, this round is not any of the ones we just talked about. They are mostly, you know, well, telecommunications, some alarm stuff, the paint and carpet, because it's really, it's really, it's really worn out and a tough place to be for kids and staff.
Those are the big ones.
Then the emergency repairs. Anyway, so that total of the costs that we know are low end, $6 million, high end, $16 million. That's that 3% to 7%. Potential additional costs, so zero to 6 million. Any one of those things fails, it, it, you know, we, we just, we have no idea to know that they'll hold together. We believe they will, but there's a risk to waiting. So the cost of waiting a year is in the ballpark of, a big ballpark of 6 million, as high as 22 million if everything went wrong and we had to do it all. And the cost escalation of the project, 7%.
Tell me, Kelly, about the escalation cost. I just, my, my brain was not.
So the escalation cost, what we, once, one data point we have is that the MSBA projects have, between 2010 and 2016, have escalated at a construction cost escalation of 6.9 something percent. So nearly 7%. And they have, and you can go on their site, they have completed projects, projects being done now, and ones in the queue. And those all have price tags on them, so they know, they can track it. And so that's been their, their experience. Obviously, a recession or something, something big would obviously change that, but that's where, that's what they know now.
So it's a, the cost would escalate 7% at the high end.
The high end.
3% to lower.
At the low end is a, is sort of a, a general just, you know, cost per, you know, annual year. Yeah. And that's per year, so that assumes.
Six and fourteen.
That, that assumes two years of cost escalation now, right, for all those things?
On, right, because of the two-year delay.
Yeah.
It's a two-year delay to when you build.
That's only the financial cost. We're not talking about the emotional cost, the time and effort that everybody has to put in.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you, yes.
And then the potential additional cost?
All the infrastructure that's aging and not knowing if any of that's going to need major repair.
We, we do not, we do not intend to replace the roof or rebuild the septic or those things. But should they fail in, in the.
We've got to do it. And that was a previous one.
Correct. So the, the potential additional cost could be zero. It could be as high as 6 million if they all need it to be done.
So is it really a cost of waiting two years?
Well, I, I could only say that with time, the, the risk of having to spend that money goes up, increases.
How about the escalation costs or escalation cost increase are based on their two-year delay?
Yes, it's actually a, a one-year delay to wait to get MSBA, to see if we would get MSBA funding in the next round.
And then there's a years' process after that.
And then you start their process and their, I think, one of the other things is that you, it gets, I could come to it shortly, but you, you, you save in your timeframe. You can shorten the overall timeframe, one, two years of funding to, you know, building completion.
Can someone remind me what the cost was for the high school?
92 million.
92.6.
92.6, says the head of building committee. Other questions? I know it's a lot. It's a lot of ways to sort of approach it. So it's just trying to be fair and consider the, all the aspects. Potential reimbursement, this is just briefly how the state determines reimbursement. Reimbursement is based on a town's wealth factor. That's what they call it and how they determine that. CCHS, this is important. The project baseline reimbursement rate was 34.5%. The project effective reimbursement rate after exclusions was 29%. So the more that you do, you feel, for example, we wanted a second gym at the high school and felt for our programs and our education that that was really important. We've had it at the old school.
Joanna, it's actually 27.
Yeah, actual is 27%? I'm glad you're here. But so those.
That's kind of the question I was asking earlier.
Yes, so effectively, you have, you know, your, your percentage goes down as you.
Add things on.
Include some things that aren't, aren't what they would reimburse. And the scope exclusions have continued to grow over time. I know Ian Rames is here from our finance department too. He's an expert on that, if you have questions, and has followed it. But they're likely to have more exclusions. Auditorium and regulation gym are the big ones that we've, you know, focused on for our, our kids and what we would think would be beneficial for the town and the community as well. So the CMS project effective reimbursement rate right now is being estimated somewhere between 20 and 25%. So on a $90 million building, that reimbursement factor is estimated at 18 to 22 million, 22 and a half.
Do you have a figure as to the cost if you didn't have the auditorium and the regulation gym?
No, we haven't done that cost.
I mean, if it's 20 million, no, maybe.
Yeah.
We don't get everything we want.
Yeah.
I just looked up, I think, I think that's a number you ought to have.
Yeah.
To start.
Right. Here it is with, here it is without.
Yeah. And the benefit, reimbursement benefit is obviously, it's consumed by waiting with, if you, the longer you wait, the more that you.
I think, I think, and I apologize if I'm just not remembering correctly, but I remember something about if we, if we went ahead with this feasibility study now and for whatever reasons, MSBA calls the superintendent, said, "Guess what? We're inviting you to throw your hat for 2020." There would be some additional costs associated with it because we're going to have to conform to their way of doing business.
Right. So whenever we, if we were to be accepted, and they're on a calendar year, so the next call would be December of 19, then we would need to start the process under their oversight. So any architects or OPMs that we've secured would not be allowed to continue. Essentially, you'd be going back to square one. So we definitely note the challenge to that and the risk to that. I don't, I personally wouldn't be sitting here if I was highly thinking we were going to be invited in. I'd be saying wait a year.
Well, just again, for complete.
Sure, for complete transparency.
You should.
Absolutely.
Have that number up because you're, you're trying to say, well, here's the bad stuff that's going to happen if you wait. I get it.
Yeah, no, it's a good point to be sure we're clear about.
Get that in there.
Mm-hmm.
It's, you know, it's not going to be a giant amount of money, but.
Well, it's significant enough to be sure we've said the right information.
And the amount that we, this article of a million and a half is what we've got, we've, we've, again, we tie ourselves to their process and what they have, what their feasibility studies and schematic design process has caused. So ideally, it, it, the high school, we came in under, I think we asked for a million two, no, and we, it was 900,000 roughly. So we, then you roll that extra into the cost of, you know, the building process. So ideally, in essence, what I'm saying is you hope not to have to spend all that and it can be included in the next stage.
And is this 20 to 25% the kind of reimbursement that you're, you've seen over the last couple of years for a middle school project? Is that what it's about?
Yeah. So the biggest reason why there's such a spread. The biggest reason why there's such a spread between the baseline reimbursement and the effective reimbursement is because of the, the construction cost escalation. So MSBA actually has a square foot ceiling where they'll say, you know, here's what we'll fund the square footage cost of this building. And they vote about once a year how much they're going to increase it. And they've increased it by 3% the last couple of years, but it just hasn't kept up with the 7%.
So what's maximum, what's the?
I actually don't have the number off the top of my head, but looking at the other middle schools, there's, it's about 30% of their projects it's excluded. So they're taking 30% off of their total project cost right away and saying, here's your reimbursement rate's going to be based on this, which lowers the effective, pretty, quite a bit.
Is your website, when the construction growth between 2010, 2016, do you list each year what the growth was, or is it just?
They have, they have, yes, they have.
I mean, 2010, my guess is, you're just coming out of the position, probably at a low point. So if you've got 2015 to 2018, you might be at a much lower number.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of variation, I guess, between the years.
And hopefully, we may, the tariffs on steel might not be, you know, still an effect. What other expenses? I, I mean, I don't know how much Minuteman seemed to be able to come in. I mean, what was budgeted a long time ago had been met. So the construction cost didn't seem to escalate terribly on that.
Yeah, so they.
They're being a little biased.
Yeah, but I mean.
Tom, could you ask his name?
I'm sorry?
Could you ask his name for the record, please?
Oh, yes. Ian Rames. So and they have all the data on there, and they, and they have a trend line going up through 2016. They didn't extend it beyond that yet, but you can see the projects and the costs going out beyond those years. And it, the 7% looks like it could be low even, so. out beyond those years, and it, the seven percent looks like it could be low even, so.
Okay. And lastly, just a little bit about self-funding and the benefits. As I said earlier, we do accelerate the construction timeline, which again is, is another cost savings, potentially to some of that escalation. There's a potential savings of six to twenty-two million through elimination of cost escalations, operating inefficiencies and maintenance costs, we've gone through that, I hope that's somewhat clear. And in the school design, we've talked about the auditorium and the gym. We, we have gotten requests from youth groups for gym space, regulation gym space, the rec department, places, you know, that would really be happy to see. We have a community regulation gym, all the elementary schools and the current middle schools are undersized, so they can't host a lot of, of the programming. And some other of those green sustainability features that have been brought up are an opportunity for us to have some flexibility in, in how we wanna design that and get some, some of the sustainability features that we, you know, would align with our, our town values. And initially, you know, town shelter and some things like that, that would be really, you know, a, a, a good town community asset, should, should we need it. They come across all of them. And I think that's what makes these my, my fellow asking questions.
Are there any follow-up questions?
Well, I, I know that, for instance, the replacement of the boilers was part of a Green Communities grant, did that happen while I was involved in that?
Yep.
And, and I know at the same time, we were looking at solar panels on the roof, which, so that there's nothing new about the state of the rooms. We knew then we couldn't, we couldn't use that space.
Right.
But as I just used as an example, the Green Communities Fund, their, their grant programs are, we're looking at the MSBA as the total funding available for a new building in the state. I'm wondering if anybody is looking at other funds available in the state that could be employed to offset some of the costs.
Yeah, we've been doing, we've started to do some of that work to see what other funds might be, especially in the terms of the, the green facilities, you know, I, just a little bit on the boilers, because it makes the point to keep down this path, on, we were reimbursed, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately between the two schools in those boilers. We've saved over five hundred thousand in the years since they went in. So well worth investigating. Jared, my business manager, met with Kate Hanley this past week to start to see what was out there, not just for the middle schools, for any and all schools, and what we might have for options that's there. So we certainly will do that homework. I think the green side of the aspect is the most likely side to find funding, so.
Well, thank you very much, it's been a lot of work together. You wanna, yeah, just very quick comment, I don't wanna get.
No, I'm, I'm wondering about any cost.
Identify.
I'm sorry, Nick Pappas, three hundred Virginia Road. I'm wondering about any cost that we're discussing today related to educational impact during construction. So for instance, if you're replacing the school, the Sanborn school, worst case is, you put it on the same footprint, now you have to find a place for students to, to be educated for a year.
Good question.
Right, it's a great question.
And I know in the law, I'm trying to imagine where you put a hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot building that wasn't.
Yeah, so what we believe to be the case, and we have Fine Gold Alexander's support on this, is that we could build on the field site, very much like the high school, build on the field site next to Sanborn, school goes on as normal in Peabody and Sanborn during construction. And then the Sanborn building would be demolished when we're complete, and the field's restored there, and then Peabody's an asset back to the town. So to your point, there would be some disruption with construction going on, but school goes on as normal in those two sites until, till the new building. Yes, yes.
Wouldn't be a cost differential if we waited or did it now.
And then it's not for a. You identify yourself.
I'm Louis Salami, I live in Great Meadows Road, I was the vice chair of the high school building project and oversaw it with Stan Durlocker. I just had two quick points. The first on the MSBA funding, I know the MSBA all too well. The fact of the matter is, Tim Cahill, who was the treasurer at the time, in 2010, when he came to visit Concord, this is my interpretation, we got lucky that we got the twenty-seven million dollars that we got, he was running for governor. And we all viewed it as his way of getting Concord to vote for him. And so I know, you know, this is a topic that's of, you know, discussion here tonight, and that the finance committee, that somehow if the school district applies again to get funding, that they're gonna get it, there's not a chance in hell it's gonna happen. I think the MSBA views Concord as they kinda checked the box, the twenty-seven million dollars that we got, and if you actually look at the communities that are out there that have act, that apply for funding, you know, part of the MSBA's charge, and I, you know, I can understand it, is that they're trying to, you know, weigh the economic needs of the communities that are in need, it's just, you know, public policy that others, these big, um, um, urban districts that replaced our high schools, these are three to four hundred million dollar, you know, projects that they will fund, a hundred, a hundred and fifty million dollars. So my perspective is, there's no way that they're gonna, if, if the school district and we, you know, choose to wait, there's no way that they're gonna, they, you know, that they're gonna fund the school, they've already checked the box and we're done. Secondly, just for cost comparison purposes, I actually checked Joanna's work, and it's spot on in terms of the, the cost data, I'm still friendly with some of the construction people we work with, and her, her numbers are right on, ninety million is the number. And if you were to put forward today the cost of the new high school, which we finished in 2015, this project, which took people's breath away in terms of what it costs, is a hundred and seventy million dollars today, and it cost the community ninety-two point six in 2015. So my, you know, so, you know, those are hard numbers that are real.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, as an example of, a big high school, they're.
They're in construction.
I saw a little, ten-year, more than a hundred million, I mean, something like three hundred million.
We, Belma High School's three fifty.
Yeah.
Somebody's running for governor. Well, I'm sure you'll have more questions at the finance committee, and, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very helpful, and there are, I mean, it's a big number, obviously, so.
Well, we have several opportunities to entertain lots of questions, and I, sorry we don't have the schedule for you, at least a hard copy tonight, but I would like to send it to you all, just so you can follow, and we'll either make arrangements to have a tour, or if it happens, one of those, whatever you decide is easiest, but we, we would welcome continuing the conversation.
I'd also suggest, in, in terms of the tour and bringing other interest groups through, that you think about the council on age, I mean, there, go through the town committees and think about those who might not be captured otherwise, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Great point.
The other thing I just wanna mention is that, you know, I heard a lot of discussion about the changing approach to education, project-based learning, and that these schools just don't accommodate that kind of learning. When I hear that, I get a little worried. You know, in five, ten years from now, project-based learning will be replaced by the next new thing, and that we're building, we're designing a school to meet this current trend of, you know, of teaching. And I just wanna make sure that we.
Yeah, no, I wanna.
And that we're building for our way.
Oh, most. Definitely. Again, the goal there is flexibility, we're not gonna pick one, one aspect and stick with that and not have our, our mindset open. What we're trying to do, and I would admit this is a challenge that we face in general, we're trying to prepare kids for what we really can't identify yet. You know, I was, you know, you're out at the store, and you see there are kiosks now to get the glass changed on your phone and your iPad, I mean, those did not exist ten years ago, who would've known they were gonna become what we all needed? So, and that's a very low-level example. So what we know we need to do, and the, the employers are driving this discussion, and it's coming out of the work, out of the top employers in the country and internationally, they want creativity, collaboration, flexibility. So whichever way we get to that, we know that's the need, we need to be starting to fill. Our kids have information at their fingertips in a way never before, so the balance between what facts do they need to have, and what do they need to be able to discern on moments' notice when they can research it, versus how they're gonna aggregate and apply. Frankly, our job is now about the higher level skills in many ways, because you have to be able to synthesize all of that and create new things as an outcome, and not just regurgitate what's already been given to you. So there's not gonna be one way we determine that, we're doing some work right now, the facilities planning group is actually in an educational visiting discussion with a consultant, where we're really studying what's out there in the 21st century literature and research in terms of what our school's gonna do now to prepare for the next thirty to fifty years. So we're trying to parallel the lifespan of the school, not grab the hottest new thing.
That's what I wanna make sure we.
I think that's what you were asking me, yes. Not grab the hottest new thing and then pigeonhole ourselves.
Exactly. It becomes educationally obsolete.
That's right.
It'd be a beautiful facility.
Right. Peabody would be a great example of grabbing the hottest new thing, and then it fades away. Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now ready to approve the 2019 election warrant, which we all have in our package. I don't think there's too much controversy regarding this. Unless there are questions or comments, I will accept the motion.
Okay, any discussion? Are we ready? All right. I move that we approve the 2019 election warrant as drafted.
Have a second.
A second?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
That was nice. Okay, now we move, uh, update the town department on 2030 long-range plan.
Jim, could I ask for your difference on this for a few weeks?
Sure can.
I did make the request of departments to update, and I didn't get a full response. Might as well particularly ask for a couple of more weeks, because we're asking a lot to status report on, I think about four hundred tasks that the long-range plan identified.
And then I think we can all get our comments in, I know we've got a few, I'm prepared.
Our deadline is today.
Yeah.
And are we trying to schedule, you know, the front end to hear from town departments?
Follow on discussion for the board.
Yeah, I think the next meeting, what we can do is that everybody will be here, we can have them distributed and comment and discuss them at that point. I mean, I think it's helpful that they.
Oh, no.
Yeah. It's, by the way, I apologize for the delay.
Uh, we're ready now for the town moderator on electronic voting update. Good evening.
Good evening, select board, Carmen Reese, town moderator, 52 Devon Street. So thanks for putting me on the agenda tonight, I just wanted to update everybody on where we are with our electronic voting pilot demonstration, and a few things I wanted to go over, I just wanted to talk just really briefly about, because unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here at your meeting the first time this came up. So I just wanted to talk briefly about what the impetus was for putting the question of electronic voting before town meeting to think about, talk a little bit about the system that we've settled on for testing. That system is a change from the one that we originally were looking at, I'll explain why we made that change. And then I'd like to talk with the board about how to place before town meeting the question of how we do the pilot test on April ninth, and I have some suggestions about that. And then finally, I, I gave you all a, an early draft of the questionnaire that I'm working on to gather everybody's feelings in a bunch of, on a bunch of different issues associated with not only town meeting and how we're doing, and how efficient we are, things like pro and con microphones, et cetera, really wanna take the pulse of all of our town meeting attendees on how they feel about those things. But there's a lot of questions about what do we think about electronic voting, and should we use it at all, and if so, under what circumstances, and if so, what kind of system? So those are all there, and I'm interested to hear your thoughts about that. So the impetus, you know, we use about fifteen minutes at least every time we count a vote at town meeting, so as soon as you count two or three votes now, that's, that can be the difference between three nights and, and four nights. There's also a lot of sitting around and cooling your heels while that happens. And I think that it's a thing that voters find a little frustrating, I mean, they accept that we have to do it, but there's no way to do it faster, we do it as fast as we can. There is the potential for cutting down that time by using electronic voting, at least in that counted vote situation, maybe also on two-thirds vote situations, because those tend to be harder to count than majority vote situations. And then there's a potential cost savings associated there as well. I noticed that the town manager in this excellent budget book has really pulled out a lot of the costs, they're all on page a hundred and twenty, they're a lot more split out than they have been in prior years, so we understand what we're spending on town meeting and reports and so on. And it, it looks like, assuming, and there's some of these things that are kinda unit costs per night, like for example, overtime for police and fire and so forth. And if you total those up, I think we get roughly fifteen thousand dollars a night for the things that are unit costs. And assuming that we can do our bids in such a way that we don't end up having to pay our vendors for four nights, even though we only use three, that offers us the potential of saving fifteen thousand dollars by using electronic voting, if that gets us from four nights to three nights, because we aren't counting votes. So it's just a possibility, it's not a guarantee by any means. And the system that we're looking at, incidentally, if, we're, we're getting it free of charge for this demonstration, but if we were to rent it, assuming that our staff would be able to manage it in-house, and they'll know after we do this demonstration whether that would work for them, it's about eight thousand dollars. So you can see there's the possibility of a not insubstantial savings on a net basis.
Is that eight thousand a night, or eight thousand?
Nope, eight thousand for the whole meeting. Okay. There's also, you know, potentially an increased confidence in vote count. The tellers do an excellent job, they do it two by two, they split the section carefully, we have veterans doing this, but you can make mistakes. We, so, you know, I think most of the time, people are pretty confident, but the clicker system is even more accurate than people eeny-meeny-miny-moing down the row. The, there has been a positive experience in other towns, and this is increasing, every year, there are more towns that are using electronic voting in their town meetings. And by and large, anybody who tries it sticks with it. They, there haven't been a lot of folks who've tried it and then decided against using it again.
How many years have been, that's been going on?
Oh, let's see, you know, I think that Wayland was the pioneer, and I wanna say there may be seven, eight years at this point, and they were, they were an early adopter, and many, you know, an increasing number of towns have fallen in, in this, in the subsequent years. And, you know, the story on how Wayland ended up with electronic voting was that there was a challenge to a vote count by the moderator, it was redone, the moderator turned out to be wrong, and people were so upset about it that they formed a committee and decided to investigate electronic voting, and they've, they've never gone back.
That would never happen in this town.
From your lips to God's ears, sir. Okay. And, you know, we can hope, it's reasonable to think, that if we're making better use of people's time at town meeting, they're more likely to show up. And that is really the most important goal, is to increase citizen participation in, in town meeting. Okay, so the system that we're using is turning technologies. And as I mentioned, we'll have this free of charge, this is a clicker-based system, the clickers are little, they're simple, they'll go on a lanyard, you can put it around your neck, so you don't drop it, you don't, you lose it, you don't step on it, and you always know where it is. They're, they're very simple, everyone will, you know, when you check in, you get a clicker, so won't be any additional time for this, when you leave, you drop a clicker in the box, so no additional time there will be required. Every single clicker has its own individual SKU code on it, it has its own number, and only those clickers that are distributed at our town meeting will register. are distributed at our town meeting will register on the radio frequency network that we will have by way of a thumb drum plugged in to a laptop. And...
And you'll be able to tell who's walked out with it around their neck?
Well, no. So, we will have to decide...
If they walk out, they'll be outside with the radio.
Right.
I'm just saying at the end of even the meeting, I mean, they'll just, so we...
Yeah. Well, there won't be anybody able to vote.
Vote outside, outside.
Right. Yeah. So, the, what the, what having a list of the clicker numbers does is it prevents anybody from having one of these clickers that they got somewhere else for bringing it to our town meeting and voting with it. So, only the ones that we have, that we're distributing, will be able to, capable of registering a vote on our system. Now, when those get distributed, they're all anonymous. There are some towns that have representative town meeting where there's an assignment of person to number, and that's to keep track of everybody's vote. They can be displayed on a screen. Everybody who's voted for a representative of the town meeting can know how their representative voted. We want the opposite so that nobody, nobody is being tracked on their device. Only one vote will count. If you make a mistake, you can re-vote while the window's open, and only your last vote will count. And this is a radio frequency network, so it's not the internet. It's secure. It's not hackable, and it has a limited range. So, it shouldn't work outside the gymnasium.
And it works, having a student at the high school, there's often complaints about the reception, about...
About reception, sorry.
Wifi reception period.
Yes. And that is, in fact, is one of the reasons why we switched from the other system that we were thinking about to this one. So, that said, we won't, we won't fix people's names to any of these individual clickers, but because your clicker that you are voting with does have a number on it, it is capable of that. So, if there were a bunch of people who really had a question about whether my yes vote really got recorded as a yes vote, we can tell.
But what about if somebody leaves early and hands their clicker to somebody else and somebody can move two of them?
So, you know, Jane, that is exactly the same problem that we have with the paper ballots, and we did have one episode at the last annual town meeting of parents splitting off who was watching the kids at home and who was at town meeting, and one simply handed the ballot to the other one without the second one checking in. And you're not supposed to do that.
Well, I'm actually talking about two, I'm not talking about one person, two pieces. I'm talking about one person, two clickers.
Well, you will get one when you check in.
My wife and I come, we both get a clicker. Halfway through, I decide to go and go home, and I hand a clicker to my wife.
Right. So, I think what we're probably going to have to do is require everybody who leaves to turn in their clicker.
Probably be better vote anyway, though.
So, some towns, most towns actually require people, when they go to the bathroom, to turn their clicker in and then pick up their clicker again when they re-enter the auditorium. Not every town does that. I think it's, you know, I'll have some more conversation with town staff about what they think makes the most sense, and also the town clerk, what they think makes the most sense in terms of security. We want to make it simple and not overly onerous for the voters, but we want security and we don't want them getting lost because we will have to pay for the ones that we lose. So, but in general, the towns that have used these systems, they haven't lost any clickers. They all get turned in, and it's, it's fine. It seems to be working really well. Okay. So, 11 Massachusetts towns have been using the clickers by turning technologies that we're going to have a pilot demonstration of. Eight of those towns are open town meetings. And all of them have reported a good track record in terms of how easy they are to use, their accuracy, their reliability, and a high-level confidence in the security of the voting network. So, why did we change? Well, we were originally thinking about an app-based system that we had a small demonstration of here in town over the summer, actually. And that was by a company called Voats, and it was an app that you'd download to your phone, or you would put it on your tablet. And there would have been tablets available in the auditorium for people who didn't have a smart device or for whatever reason didn't want to download the app. It had benefits of, if the town adopted it, you could send push notices, you could use it to conduct surveys, and it had the potential, the long-term potential, of being a means to remote voting if the town were to decide that was a direction it wanted to go in. So, the problems, however, we weren't able to get this demonstration free, and we weren't able to get it down to a cost that felt comfortable just as a demonstration. It was clearly going to have a much more intense learning curve and time curve than the clicker system will. And just the demonstration presented some serious technical challenges and costs in terms of expanding our wifi network. We were going to have to like create our own wifi network within the gymnasium to be sure that we had enough wattage to actually collect the votes from all the devices. We weren't going to be able to use the school's wifi for that. So, we don't have to do any of that in order to do this demonstration. And, you know, in addition, I think the initial feedback that I heard, and also knowing what kind of feedback the Select Board and the townhouse has had about app-based parking meters, we're not ready to go there. We're just not ready to go there. So, we will, we go for clickers first and see whether we like the idea of electronic voting, and down the road somewhere, we can always return to an app-based system if that's something we want to think about. So, how are we going to use this? On Tuesday night, April 9th, we'll hand out all the clickers when people check in. There'll be a brief instruction on how to use them. We'll have two test votes. And then it will be time for the meeting to decide how they'd like to try using the clickers for the rest of the meeting. And what I would propose is to get that question in front of the voters, that the Select Board make a motion to fix the manner of voting, to be by electronic clicker for votes requiring a standard count and for any vote requiring two-thirds or greater quantum of votes for passage. That's what they're doing in Acton, and it gives you the best advantage in terms of saving time, and it gives you the best advantage in terms of preserving the transparency and public nature of our voting at town meeting, which has been a thing that Concord citizens have really embraced over time. So...
And that vote would be by clicker and majority?
For...
Whether we want to do the clicker?
Yes, that's right. Well, I would say, you know what, I think that that, I think that that vote we would, we would do by paper ballot. And I should say that we'll distribute paper ballots along with, and that's an important backup system because, I don't know. I mean, I'm not anticipating a failure. I haven't heard of failures with this system, but we do not want to have to spend 20 minutes handing out paper ballots if we have a technical glitch. And it would also be my plan to create an area where people who are just feeling like, you know what, no thanks, the rest of you people can experiment. I already know what I think. I want to vote by paper ballot. They can do that in, in one section of the auditorium. And that way, since it's only one section, I don't have to worry about whether people are voting once by paper ballot and once by clicker.
Running back.
Better work.
Got to work that out. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
It's difficult about that.
You're here to help.
So, that motion would require a second. It would be debatable. It could be amended from the floor, and it would require a majority vote. And I would say that we do that one in the traditional way, which is a raised paper ballot, and then the meeting will decide how it wishes to use the clickers during, during...
Would we do that on the first or the second night?
On the 9th, which is the Tuesday. And, and the, you know, town staff really felt that they don't get the building until 3:30 in the afternoon on Monday to try and get everything in place, to be ready for town meeting. And their feeling was they, they didn't really want to add a new thing to, to the rodeo that is getting everything ready in the, on the first night. So, they thought the second night would be better. And I felt that the second night would be better than the third because I'd really like to get, you know, we typically have more people on the second night than on the third. And in order to have a meaningful input from people to see what do they think about this, it would be great to have more people have some experience with it.
Standing, Carmen, to make sure I understand, is one of the moderators has decided that she can't make a judgment?
Yeah, that's exactly right. So, it's a vote, it's a situation where we've already, we've already raised our paper ballots, and I'm looking at it and I can't decide whether we have a majority or not, and therefore we have to count the vote. So, instead of spending 15 minutes with our tellers, with closing the doors, our tellers will, you know, I think we'd still close the doors, but people would vote by clicker instead of by, by paper ballot. Right.
And would we, would this motion be a motion we would do with on Tuesday, or would we do with it on Monday when we start town meeting?
So, I think it would need to be on Tuesday because it would be that meeting, the meeting that's assembled in the hall on Tuesday that would need to make the decision on, yes. Right. They're the right body.
And it would end, wouldn't carry over to...
Yes. That's right. That's right. And, and probably it would be wise to include that limitation within the motion. Yes, for this evening.
Well, I think we should do it. I mean, I think we need to experiment with this and hear their concerns and see how they work and see what kind of experience we have. It sounds to me like that's a pretty well-thought-out experiment. I think it's terrific. I'm sure how it worked.
Well, that's great. I can't think of a better place to get public input about town meeting than town meeting itself. So, this is where, you know, we'll, we'll try this out in a very limited way, and it's still the meeting's decision, the extent to which they want to try it out. And, and then we'll see how it goes, and we'll collect feedback, which brings us to the questionnaire. So, I know you have a full agenda. We can talk about it now in terms of, or you could send me something if you each have, I want you to stay on the correct side of the open meeting law, but if you, if you have suggestions on how to improve the questionnaire, I'm all ears.
My first reaction when I saw it was, there was a lot of information there. I think, I wonder whether people, if you can contain it to a one-page, you know, yes or no, rather than, I think it was three or four pages. I just wonder whether you're going to lose some participation. I have it'd be quite as lengthy as that.
Well, let me think about that. I think that in the last couple of years, we've definitely had two-page questionnaires. I have to go back and see if they got to three. And we got very good response. And, and what we, what we've done with them is, in addition to handing them out at town meeting, every night of town meeting on paper, and having a box there that people could drop it in, people can also drop them in the town clerk's office if they don't get around to filling it out that night if they take it on their way out. And we've had an online version so that people can go to the town website and fill it in there. So, and then kept that open for a week or two after town meeting and sent out a news and notice to remind people to do the questionnaire.
I would suggest also, Carmen, that we might get an article in the Concord Journal letting folks know that we're going to experiment.
That, that actually has been in already.
Sorry?
And, and I did get some feedback that it would have been nice if I'd answered more questions that come to mind about it, but, you know, the Concord Journal has a word limit. And, you know, I mean, I carved the thing down, and then they still took some out of it, so.
I'm sorry, I missed it, but I would suggest a going again as we get closer to town meeting.
Yeah. That is good advice.
Thirty days.
Yes. And I've also, at each of the hearings, I've asked the finance committee if I can make an announcement about this at the beginning of each of their hearings. I've mentioned it one chair's breakfast. I'll mention it again tomorrow morning. And I'll ask at your hearing if I can have a few minutes at the beginning of your hearing just to talk briefly about electronic, the electronic voting experiment.
Do you kind of see that the Select Board would get up and just say, this is what we're proposing, and prior to it, it wouldn't be a warrant article of any type. It would just be...
Well, it can't be, no. It can't be at this point, but, but it's an entirely appropriate motion, both under town meeting time and under our traditions and town meeting traditions and procedures, to make a motion to fix the manner of voting. So, that's all this is. It's just a motion to fix the manner of voting. It has to be made while there's no other motion pending. It has to be made while there's no article under discussion.
Is that true, or if you just provided the language perhaps to answer?
Absolutely.
Happy to then...
Yes.
...
Assuming it be the first part of our business that we get through with the formalities.
Right. And, and we'll have it ready to tee up on the screen so that, that people can see exactly what the motion is. And then if anyone wishes to amend it, they may, you know, pursuant to our usual practices for amendments.
Any of the board members have any problems with this? I think it's a good idea.
No, I think it's a good idea. I was just going to make this suggestion. While we were talking, I pulled up the town meeting website on our, and I think that having some...
We don't have anything there yet. Yes, you're correct.
No, we don't. And I think that should be the first place we should publicize this change and what this means.
I would just mention that some of our town citizens have already had the opportunity to use a clicker system for discussion, particularly for the housing production plans forms, and that was very successful.
Carmen, I fully understand why you would do standing votes and two-thirds because those other ones are trickier. But there's also usually more at stake with those kinds of votes. The standing vote means it's too hard for the moderator to know. Have you thought about even having a preliminary, I mean, I think of the, despite the fact that one of the most important things we do, on Monday, we have someone who has budget votes that, I mean, you know, are...
Yeah.
To have something where, you know, the answer to the vote is going to be somewhat so evident to the audience.
Right. So, that would have been perhaps some of the benefit of doing it on Monday night, although we have some interesting stuff that's going to come up on Monday night. So, but, but that would have been one of the benefits, but as I mentioned, the town staff was, please, no, not Monday night.
Not necessarily Monday, but suppose that the first article out of the gate on Tuesday is somewhat benign.
Right. So, I would say two things about that. One is that we can see where we are on Monday night in the warrant, and if the board feels like based on where we are, we should kind of rethink where we start the discussion for town meeting about what they want to do. And that's really all this motion is. It's just kind of, okay, here's the framework within which we'll have the conversation about how to do this, this pilot demonstration. And it's totally up to town meeting whether they want to futz with it, you know, like, no, we don't, we want to, you know, only this or only that, you know. But, but Micah, it's certainly true that when you're counting a vote, that's usually because there's strong feeling about it. It's typically a higher interest article that, that's that close. But you don't count it until everyone's already stood up and voted. So, we've already done that public display of voting at that point. And the only thing we're doing is just making it faster to do a precise count.
Where nobody can...
Yeah.
That actually gets to the... That actually gets to the question I was going to raise, which is, that's the biggest form of pushback I've heard out there, was a moving away from the dynamic in our annual town meeting of owning your vote, of standing up however you decide to vote on something, especially when it's heartfelt, or controversial, or a closer discussion point. And that that's been the real pushback of electronic voting.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And I see that point of view, and I know how strongly many people feel about that, and I absolutely respect that. It's really the reason for that compromised position of saying, look, here's where we lose all the time. We lose all the time counting votes, and the hardest votes to count are two-thirds votes, so let's use clickers for those. And let's do everything else the way we've always done it.
As you've already said, we've already stood up and-
Already done it, yeah, or you've already held your ballot.
That's my point, I think that explaining it that way would be, it might be an easier way to grab interest and enthusiasm.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yep, yep. Okay, so I think I'm hearing a consensus from you all that that's a reasonable place to start. We'll revisit it on Monday night when we see where we are in the warrant, or perhaps right before we start on Tuesday. And I will send you language for that motion. We'll have it already in a slide, and we'll get something on the town website, and we'll get back into the newspaper again. I've been very grateful to have Aaron's able assistance in getting the attention of the Concord Journal now that we no longer have an editor here in town. So it feels like a lot of work sometimes. Thank you very much.
We're ready to take positions on warrant articles. Everybody get their list.
Little clicker.
That was your job to bring them tonight.
Rats.
Can we just go down, starting at the top, and move along?
Mr. Chairman, can I just remind you that it's been the board's practice to not take positions on articles until after the hearing?
Right.
So the only articles you'd be considering this evening are the articles that were discussed at the February 11th, February 11th, public hearing, which I have as-
You put the list, I didn't remember.
If you want to just drop these down, it's three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and seventeen, eighteen, and then, and forty-six, but then the four, you've heard the four affordable housing articles, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, but they are due to be heard again at the select board hearing, so you probably don't want to take a position on those.
Yes. Okay.
That makes our job a leader. Thank you. Anybody have any reason not to be in favor of meeting procedure? Hearing done, are we all in favor of that?
I move affirmative, recommend affirmative action on Article Three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ratify personnel board classification actions.
Recommend affirmative action on Article Four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Classification and compensation plan for regular status positions.
Recommend affirmative action on Article Five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Town budget.
Recommend affirmative action on Town Budget, Article Six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, typically you specify the amount.
That's right.
So this is when we add something?
And the amount printed in the warrant for Article Six?
Forty-nine million, fifty-two thousand, five hundred and four dollars. Sound right?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Appropriate funds municipal capital projects. That's number seven.
The requested amount is one million?
Three million, five hundred.
Yep, three million, nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Recommend affirmative action on Article Seven, in the amount of three million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Authorizing expenditure of evolving funds under Mass General laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half.
Recommend affirmative action on Article Eight.
Second.
And that, we do, we need the amount, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Authorization to accept Mass General laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20, Other Post-Employment Benefit Liability Trust Form.
Recommend affirmative action on Article Nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And maybe we get to number seventeen is use of free cash.
I recommend affirmative action on Article Seventeen, in the amount of one million dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
General bylaw amendment, sustainable growth rate. Do you want to discuss that at some later point? I don't have a question regarding-
I have, I have.
I think you should discuss that one. Yes.
At this point, or a later one?
Good question.
See what, because I think the finance committee is still somewhat developing that concept, so we will not move on that, and then we get to unpaid bills.
And no motion is expected on that.
All the bills are paid, so we don't have to do any action on that. Which, now, I don't know if it's along with, I think that's been taken care of our position on warrant articles for tonight. Review the letter to the Mass DOT.
Can I ask just a question else?
Yes.
Are you suggesting we not take a position on Article Twenty-four, which is a none? What Article Twenty-four does is ask whether we will accept Mass General laws, Forty-four, Section 55C, that will allow us to establish a-
But we can all, in the notice of the hearing, all of those articles are scheduled, were scheduled to be heard, and that's in the index.
That was just-
Yes. So just somebody might be offended if you-
Yeah, they're all in some way related.
Okay.
So we now, the letter on the Mass DOT Route Two culvert for the Shova Brook, Bridge number C-19-18, which I think we have-
We have a draft there, just by way of reminder, the board is notified by Mass DOT that they will be resurfacing Route Two from just west of the Rotary where this culvert is, to Crosby's Corner. I think it is almost the entirety of Route Two in Concord. And so they'll begin at this culvert, which is posted with a weight restriction, and as a result, sometimes the state police ticket vehicles that are overweight, trucks that are overweight, loaded with stone or what have you, and those trucks are then diverted off Route Two down Longsbrook Road to avoid the culvert. So we actually have very heavy vehicles scavenging on our local roads because there's a weight restriction on that culvert, which is near the state police horse barn, it's where the Shova Brook goes underneath Route Two. So the Public Works Department suggested the board might, they still might say, no, it's too involved, we're not going to do it with this resurfacing project, but it's worth asking if they would consider reconstructing that culvert.
And, and, isn't that also the point at which we would be interested in looking at the diversion of runoff waters into Orange Pond?
Do you have a text of a draft, of a public work report?
Anybody any further discussion? Are we ready to?
I move to approve the letter to Mass DOT driving Route Two culvert for the Shova Brook, Bridge number C-19-18, substantially drafted. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We now get to public comments. Just please.
Just wanted to ask a question.
Now, if you could come forward, happy to have questions.
Thank you, I'm sorry, not sure I understand the process. For Article number thirty?
The example.
Oh, Laura Strong.
Agnes?
Agnes. Parkus Farm, sixteen, Parkus Farm. Just wondering about Article thirty?
Article thirty.
Could you sit down, so you could be close to the microphone?
Yeah, I'm not really going to say much, just-
That's a zoning bylaw which-
Oh, yeah, I just had it.
When we look at it, it's gathered for the planning board to hear, which is Tuesday, March fifth.
Okay, so it's not, it wasn't supposed to be covered tonight. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Then after that, those public hearings, the board will take its position on those zoning warrants.
Okay, thanks.
Although, I'm not messing to do, I would note that our agenda on the website says approval of warrant articles. I think in the future, we should-
Put in the number of articles that we have.
I'm not sure why Ms. Wilson is here, but I might guess, and Mr. Dain was here, and-
And some of the school folks might have stayed longer to see.
School folks, I think we were not as clear about what we would do, so we should say these warrant articles.
Right.
Good suggestion.
Ms. Franklin, John.
You read my mind. You read my mind, Mike. And we know that you were thrilled to be here, but we enjoyed every moment.
Matt Johnson, 21 Withersby Street, member of the planning board, but here speaking on my own behalf. I believe you're in receipt of a letter from Henry Dain regarding that formula business bylaw, you know, not to preview the whole planning board hearing, but I just felt that because the planning board will not have another opportunity to meet prior to the hearing, and will have limited time afterwards, and that I will be presenting that article, I thought I should try to address some of the points in his letter. So, you know, his points are about the purported similarity between our bylaw and the Wellfleet bylaw that was struck down by the land court, and that, you know, there, of course, we have studied that very carefully. There are some crucial differences in both the wording of the bylaws, and done very much on purpose, as well as differences in the application. I think if you look at the Wellfleet decision, you'll see that just four pages out of the entire decision are focused on the formula business bylaw itself. Most of it is about the capriciousness of the planning board in its, you know, in the zoning board, in its application of the bylaw. But the most important thing is, from a legality perspective, our bylaw very explicitly states that the notion of a formula business is independent of the ownership or location of the different properties that are considered to be part of that formula. So it's important to say that while on the one hand, like Starbucks could be seen as a formula business, and it is under a common ownership, on the other hand, you know, even like a Concord cheese shop could become a formula business, even if independent businesses around the country happen to have the same signage, the same menu, and assortment of products for sale. The idea of the formula business legislation is to make Concord unique, and to really protect to a certain degree, knowing that we've always had a mix of formula businesses, that there's not a preponderance of them that dilutes the brand of Concord. And so the second most important thing to note about the differences here are relative to Wellfleet, is that in Concord, we cite the specific attributes of the zoning district that make it unique. And so for Concord Center, of course, its historical character, its tourist destination status being one of the very first cultural districts in Massachusetts. So for all of those reasons, we need to maintain a balance of formula businesses that are sort of independent of location, with the kinds of businesses that are unique to Concord, and make it that destination that you can go to. So that's the intent, and, you know, again, we treat all businesses uniformly, that's one of the problems that the land court had with Wellfleet. We do specifically disclaim any kind of ownership criterion, which Wellfleet messed up on, they didn't do that. And we have very specific criteria, the character spelled out, that we are trying to protect in the bylaw. So just wanted to note all those things, and then secondly, that we do not kind of naively interpret the AG's recent affirmations of bylaws from places like Eastham as, you know, a rubber stamp. You know, basically, the AG can't really say more than just, on the face of it, there's nothing illegal about this, okay? It's up to the courts to decide if a court case was ever made. So it's neither an endorsement, nor, you know, a denial, it's really just saying, hey, I don't see any problem with this. So those are kind of the issues that Henry Dain raised, and I just wanted to briefly address them, since he addressed the select board in his comments.
Can I just ask, Chris, have we had counsel look at?
Yes, yes, throughout the, all of the warrant articles, the planning boards are being thoroughly reviewed.
Anybody else? Okay, we are ready for liaison, the force.
I guess I'm going first, the other can. Okay. I recently attended a session with the Concord Housing Development Corporation, they are considering 930 Main Street, and are in process of deciding whether that will be a property that goes forward or not. This, the, they called an executive session to discuss the details of that, but they were able to put on the general agenda that it was being considered. I also took the opportunity to attend a session in Acton that was sponsored by Mass Audubon, and the title of the session was, "Open Space, Farms, and Housing: Is There Room For Us All?" And it was a ten, there were presentation, let me say that there were, they have a huge conference room in their town hall, as you may know, the room was packed. There were representatives from Littleton, Stowe, Framingham, Concord, and Acton, obviously, and another, a number of other communities. There were individual presentations from, I would say, conservation and farm groups, but the key to the success of that session was that it was concluded with a panel of municipal officials at various levels, from both Acton and Framingham, as it turns out, and then several spoke from the floor, about the balance and the strategies that have been used to make open space, protection of agricultural land, and housing come together. So I was glad that I happened to attend that session. And I think that's all I need to report on right now.
I met today with the Town Manager Search Committee. The topic, the main topic of our meeting today was a discussion of the asset questions that will be sent to the various candidates. We received an update from MRI about the process, it's going long as expected. We provided some input and some ordering of the questions, we thought. They're going back and doing the final draft of them, and they will be reviewed by two members of the committee, and then they will be sent out to the candidates. Our next meeting is on April the fourth, if it's 7:20 in the morning, at which time we will be-
time we will be presented with fifteen or so, I don't know the number, candidates, and we, the committee will get a binder on each, with all of the relevant personnel material. And our job at that meeting will be to reduce that number to around six. And then the committee will meet again all day on April twenty-fifth. We don't know when, but we'll probably begin at eight thirty in the morning. We don't have the schedule figured out. And that will be an executive session, not the open to the public, in which we will interview the, those six candidates. And then the following morning at seven thirty, which is a Friday, the committee will again meet and finalize then our recommendation to the select board. The select board, then as soon as that meeting is concluded, will get binders on the candidates that we are recommending to select board. And I asked Mr. Chair that the select board has a special meeting for April twenty-seventh at, I don't know, nine o'clock in the morning, to entertain an open session of the finalists that have been recommended by the search committee to work with Rock Lake as a judgment. Then in conclusion of that, you will select, the select board will select a person. And I also suggest that you, at our next meeting, would designate someone, I would suggest the chair, to meet with the candidate along with the director of personnel, as far as to actually negotiate the final contract. So hopefully we will have an answer to the next time. Maybe sometime early in the month.
Update from. Do you get a sense from the consultant in terms of the response thus far to?
We got a little bit of overview. It's only been a couple of weeks, and they said it was proceeding sort of normally. They had most of the candidates were from Massachusetts, Rhode Island, but I think they said they had one or two from Chicago, maybe one from New York, one from Ohio, as I recall. And the numbers were consistent, but they expect, they expect the last two weeks to be the real flood of applicants as they get to mature. And so everything seems to be moving ahead.
On time, on budget.
Yeah. Budget is really good.
I did not have any liaison, so.
And this is my busy week.
I was at a town lawsuit last week, but I attended the district meeting today, and I attended the board of health meeting last week. I think we can expect to see some proposed updates to our own bylaws regarding the sale, restrict furniture from the sale of flavored e-cigarettes and devices. It has become a huge problem in the schools, not just in Concord, but across the country, that e-cigarettes are seen as a significant health risk. And some communities in Massachusetts and some communities elsewhere have been looking at restricting the locations where you can purchase these flavored e-cigarettes to further protect our kids.
I think there was some material in the folder about that, so.
Was there?
Making progress on.
Was there any discussion about the recent closing of the medical marijuana?
Only a mention. They failed many health code.
Right. That's why I was wondering.
They have some time period, I believe it's sixty days, to come into compliance with the health code before they can open. Real.
This is the Acton?
This is the Acton, but I mean, I'm thinking about the votes that we were very involved in, in terms of our retail establishment, and we haven't seen any of the other activity before. But this is right on our borders, so it's pretty close.
Okay, we're ready miscellaneous correspondence.
Tenses that we've just discussed.
Right.
Mr. Dane.
Mr. Dan.
Well, Mr. Dane, this one we just received.
Right.
This is the real estate transfer tax, not the, not the corporate business.
I do know.
As I said at the beginning, I think there's been comments regarding both the school budget
material, the transfer tax, and the, I mean, so with that, then I guess we're ready for committee nominations.
Go on. I move to nominate Richard Higgins of Fifteen Grove Street to the Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee. Carlin Heffle of Fifty Highland Street to the Junction Village Open Space Task Force. Jennifer Modbach of Forty-five Pine Street to the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee.
Then I guess we're ready now for committee appointment.
I move to appoint David Withersby of One Ninety-five Heath Bridge Road to the Suasco Sudbury Ascent River Stewardship Council for an unexpired term to expire, to expire May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we have the favor of motion.
I move to adjourn.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.